The life of the Lord, the Lord has taught us everything. We will do our best to serve him. We will do our best to help him. We will do our best to help him. We will do our best to help him. In the name of our Lord, amen.
(Singing) What is the joy of me? What is the joy of me? My heart is crying, my soul is crying. My heart is crying, my soul is crying. I will sing and pray for you. 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 What is the joy of me? My heart is crying, my soul is crying. My heart is crying, my soul is crying. I have been cursed and cursed. I have been cursed and cursed. God, God, came to me. God, God, came to me. What is the joy of me? My heart is crying, my soul is crying. My heart is crying, my soul is crying. I have been cursed and cursed. 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 What is the joy of me? My heart is crying, my soul is crying. My heart is crying, my soul is crying. I have been cursed and cursed. 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 What is the joy of me? My heart is crying, my soul is crying. My heart is crying, my soul is crying.
(Singing)
(Singing) When Jesus was born, I was a child. I was afraid of him. He will lead us through the path. When Jesus was born, I was a child. I was afraid of him. He will lead us through the path. You will be scared of him. You will be scared of him. You will be cursed and cursed. You will be cursed and cursed. When Jesus was born, I was a child. I was afraid of him. He will lead us through the path. You will be cursed and cursed. 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 When Jesus was born, I was a child. I was afraid of him. He will lead us through the path. You will be cursed and cursed. 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 When Jesus was born, I was a child. I was afraid of him. He will lead us through the path. You will be cursed and cursed. 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 When Jesus was born, I was a child. I was afraid of him. He will lead us through the path. You will be cursed and cursed. 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 When Jesus was born, I was a child. I was afraid of him. He will lead us through the path.
261 in Tamil song book. Paralogame, ensundame, enjukkambeno. 661.
(Singing) Paralogame, ensundame, enjukkambeno. Enjumbe, yesuvaai, naan enjukkambeno. Paruttham, pasitthagam, manathu yaram, thangayillai. Paruttham, pasitthagam, manathu yaram, thangayillai. Winthriidham, vaankippe, vinnavar, padamsedpe. Winthriidham, vaankippe, vinnavar, padamsedpe. Siluvayil, arayundee, ini thannalla, yesuvaai. Siluvayil, arayundee, ini thannalla, yesuvaai. Avarin, magi, magi, enadu lakshiyame. Avarin, magi, magi, enadu lakshiyame. Yesu, enambikaya, indha, gumiyum, sundamalla. Yesu, enambikaya, indha, gumiyum, sundamalla. Parisutha, sindayudan, yesuvaipin, patsuvai. Parisutha, sindayudan, yesuvaipin, patsuvai. Othattay, jayamoodan, naanam, odiida, arultsayva. Othattay, jayamoodan, naanam, odiida, arultsayva. Paramasugam, kandvai, parandeshamadil, serve. Paramasugam, kandvai, parandeshamadil, serve. Rappagam, illai, rachagar, velichavai. Rappagam, illai, rachagar, velichavai. Alayipin, sattam, kettu, naanam, ayathama, kiduvai. Alayipin, sattam, kettu, naanam, ayathama, kiduvai. Nattalunne, rendukke, thanjayum, perugudke. Nattalunne, rendukke, thanjayum, perugudke. Enjumbe, yesuvaai, naan enjukkambeno.
Our boys will sing an English song. We will sing the song "Some glad morning when this life is over I'll fly away." (Singing) Some glad morning when this life is over I'll fly away. To a home on dark celestial shore, I'll fly away. I'll fly away, oh glory, I'll fly away. When I die, hallelujah, by and by, I'll fly away. When the shadows of this life has gone, I'll fly away. Like a bird from persebush has flown, I'll fly away. I'll fly away, oh glory, I'll fly away. When I die, hallelujah, by and by, I'll fly away. Just a few more veritations then, I'll fly away. To a land where joy shall never end, I'll fly away. I'll fly away, oh glory, I'll fly away. When I die, hallelujah, by and by, I'll fly away. Once again, we welcome each and every one of you for this night's final session of this day. We are very glad that you have all come from many different places. Some of you have attended all the sessions of this day also. I am sure that all the sessions were a blessing for each and every one of you. And tomorrow will be our final day of this meeting. And morning we gather at nine o'clock for worship.
(Singing)
And then at four o'clock we gather again in the evening. And then at night we have the final session at six thirty. So, I request you all to attend the session so that it would be a blessing for each and every one of us. Now for the blessing of this message, I request Brother Stalin from Sri Perumathur to come forward and lead us in prayer.
Amen.
Once again, let us turn to the book of Daniel, chapter nine. We will read from verses twenty-four to twenty-seven. May the Lord bless the reading of the portion of the scripture. We were studying from the book of Daniel, the seventy weeks which is mentioned here. From morning onwards, we were continuing. Now is the fourth session this day. In the last class, we considered the purpose of these four ninety years. There are six purposes are there.
(Singing)
And the first three is to deal with the sin of the nation. Transgression.
Miraadhal.
Sins.
Pavangal.
And iniquity.
(Singing)
And God wants to cover them or to protect them or to forgive all their sins. Their rebellious nature will come to an end when the Lord will come on the Mount of holiness. When they see the Lord Jesus Christ whom they have pierced, at that time they will weep, they cry and confess their sins before him. Lord will come to deliver them from their sins. And God will remove the ungodliness from Jacob. And will redeem them from their sinful condition. That is one of the ultimate purpose of the four ninety years. Not only he is removing their sins.
(Singing)
The three more blessings are mentioned in connection with this. Let us look at the threefold blessings that offered as a result of four ninety years. The fourth thing we see here and to bring in everlasting righteousness. So the everlasting righteousness is speaking about the righteous kingdom the Lord is going to establish. And we know that God has given a promise to the nation of Israel that the Messiah will come having ruled the earth with the righteousness. If you look at the human history, from the beginning, the human government were not righteous. If you look at the human history, from the beginning, the human government were not righteous at all. Every government, you take any government, they were not righteous government, all type of wickedness is visible in the human government. But God has promised to the Israel that the Messiah will come and he will establish the kingdom and his kingdom is an everlasting righteousness will be there. From the New Testament, we understand that Jesus is going to rule this earth for thousand years. And in the Old Testament, there are lot of prophecies are given related with the righteous kingdom of Lord Jesus Christ. We are going to be with him as the church is going to be with him as the core rulers with him. The God will give a special status or position to the nation of Israel at that time, they will become the head of the nations. Jerusalem will be made the international capital at that time. The world parliament will be established in Jerusalem at that time. Jesus Christ will rule as the king of kings and the lord of lords. Whatever problems we see today will vanish during that time. The today's climate problem will not be there at that time. The whole world will have an air-conditioned climate, even a very beautiful climate will be. And all the pollution and the corruption will vanish away. And the lifespan will increase, including man's lifespan will increase. Death is very rare, death is there but it is very few, it is very rare. And Bible says if anybody dies. It is very rare but I say that, we can say that if a death is there, the minimum death is at hundred years, hundred year old. Yeah, yeah, somebody will say that yesterday there was a death in the neighbor's house, the small child died. And then you ask what is the age of the child? There is a hundred year. That my child is hundred year old. It is not my opinion, just see, I say is very clearly mentions about it. Look at that, I see a chapter sixty-five. Verse twenty. "In the land of Israel, there was a people who knew the people of the people, who knew the people of the people, who knew the people of the people, a person, a child will die, how old is? Hundred years. That one thing is mentioned, death is meant for sinners only. But the sinner being a hundred years old shall be a curse, so the sinners only will die, righteous will not die. As I told you, the climatic condition is completely going to change. The temperature will not be hot, it will be very cool climate will be there. And their atmosphere will change and there will be a brightness everywhere. And Jerusalem is going to be the highest mountain at that time. Look at that, I see a chapter two, verse two, we read about that. Just to read that. Yeah, mountain of the Lord shall be established in the top of the mountain, Simaleh will not be the highest mountain. Jerusalem will be the highest mountain at that time. That means there will be a lot of geographical changes will occur. We know the sunlight and the moonlight will increase at that time. You will be wondering if the sunlight is increasing, moonlight and increasing, the temperature will increase, isn't it? Yeah, look at that, I see a chapter thirty, verse twenty-six. "The light of the moon shall be like the light of the sun and the light of the sun shall be sevenfold like the light of seven days." I was really confused when I read that. Now itself temperature is very high, isn't it? If the temperature of the sun is, again the light is increasing, what would be the temperature, it is very difficult, isn't it? But God will not increase the temperature of the sunlight. Look at that, you see correspondingly, I see a four, verse six, you read. "There shall be a tabernacle for the shadow in the daytime from the heat and for the place of refuge for a covert from the storm and from the rain." I see a chapter four, verse six. You know, in that most fearic level, in the our atmosphere, there are certain layers of stratosphere are there, for example, there is called ozone amberla, you might have heard about it, ozone amberla. See, the ozone amberla is God has created for our protection. Is covered by ozone. What is the advantage of ozone? In the sunlight, the ultraviolet rays are there. So this ultraviolet rays are absorbed by the ozone layer. Ozone, because of that, the ultraviolet rays are not coming on the earth and it prevents from us from the cancer and all. Yeah, if ultraviolet rays are coming so much, we will get skin cancer. Now scientists say nowadays the skin cancer is increasing because some holes are developed in the ultraviolet, that is ozone number like cavities are there, so ultraviolet rays are more coming in the earth. So in I see a chapter four, we see another layer is mentioned by God. He, we see that he will make a tabernacle, he will make a number lot to protect us from heat. In the sunlight, there is a one race called the infrared race and the infrared race is responsible for generating heat, infrared rays. So, when God is covering the protecting us with this covering or tabernacle, the infrared rays will be absorbed, only light will come and it will not have heat. Even though there is sunlight will increase but there is no heat. When I studied these two verses, I thank God how scientific truth is revealed here. So that period, the millennial kingdom is going to be a wonderful place, very comfortable place for man and animals to stay. As I told you, the lifespan of animals and human beings will increase because of the climatic change. The cruelty of the animals will go. We read that even the lion will eat grass like an oxen, the grass like an oxen. The children, you need not to buy any toys to play, they will play with the live snakes. Nothing will happen to them. You please read it, I see a chapter sixty-five. And verse twenty-five, you please read. Yeah, we see that wolf and the lamb shall feed together. So there is no carnivorous animal, all are herbivorous animals. Again, I see eleven, verse six to eight, you please read, I see eleven. Six to eight. Six to eight.
ஆரு முதல் எட்டு வரை உள்ள வச்சுங்கள். அப்பொழுது ஓனாய், ஆட்டுக்குட்டியோடே மேயும், ஆட்டுக்குட்டியோடே தங்கும், புளி வெல்லாட்டுக்குட்டியோடே படுத்துக்கொள்ளும். கண்றுக்குட்டியும் வால சிங்கமும் காலையும் ஒருமித்து இருக்கும். ஒரு சிறூபையன் அவேகளை நடத்துவான். Yeah. பசுவும் கரடியும் கூடிமேயும், அவேகளின் குட்டிகள் ஒருமித்து படுத்துக்கொள்ளும். Yeah. சிங்கம் மாட்டைபோல வைக்கோள்தின்னும், பால் குடிக்கும் குலந்தை விரியன் பாம்பு வளையின் மேல் வளையாடும். பால் மறந்த பிள்ளை கட்டுவிரியன் புற்றிலே தன் கையை வைக்கும்.
Yeah, we see the nursing child shall play with on the whole of ass and being the child shall put his hand on the addos then, so they will play with the snakes.
அவே பால் குடிக்கும் குலந்தை பாம்புகளோடு வளையாடும்.
So we see that that period, the everlasting righteousness God has established is going to be a wonderful period.
அகவே அந்த காலகட்டமானது தேவன் ஸ்தாபிக்கபோகுற அந்த நீதியானது, நீதியின் காலகட்டம் மிகவும் அருமியாகிறது.
When God has created Adam and Eve and established everything, at that time the climate was very good.
ஆதாம் ஏவாளை தேவன் உண்டாக்கி அவர்களை வைத்தபோது, அந்த நேரத்தில் கால சீதோஷனை மிகவும் அருமியாகிறது.
That is why the lifespan of all these men were so much.
அகவேதான் அந்த மனிதர்களோடே அந்த ஆயிஸ்நாட்டிலாம் மிகவும் அதிகமாகிறது.
After the flood, the climatic change has occurred and the lifespan has reduced.
அந்த ஜலப் பிரலேத்துக்கு பிறிப்பாடு அவர்களோடே அந்த ஆயிஸ்நாட்டுக்கு குறைந்து போனது, அந்த சீதோஷன் நிலை மாற்றுத்தினாலே.
When God has created animals, he expected that all the animals should feed on the plants, on the plants.
தேவன் மிருங்களை உண்டாக்கினபோது, அந்த மிருங்களெல்லாம் அந்த பூமிலுள்ள புள்ளிகளை அது புட்களை அது சாப்பிடுமென்று அவர்கள் அவர் நிமித்தார்.
Every even human beings were not even eating mutton and chicken and all.
மனிதர்களும் போட யாரும் அவர்கள் இறைச்சியை சாப்பிடுகிறவர் லாகி இல்லை.
When God created man, he expected man to eat only fruits and nuts.
தேவன் மனிதனை உண்டாக்கினபோது, மனிதன் அந்த இடத்திலே விளைகிற பலங்களையும் பருப்புகளையும் சாப்பிடுமடிதான் நிமித்தார்.
Yeah, that is why he created garden first for man so that he can eat fruits and nuts and enjoy the life.
அகவேதான் முதலாவதாக அந்த மனிதன் அனுபவிக்கும்படி அவர் ஏதேன் தோட்டத்தை உண்டாக்கி, அதிலே பலங்களையும் காய்களை மைத்தார்.
Yeah, I think you might enjoyed not cooking only, only eating the fruits available, isn't it? There is no cooking.
அகவே நீ சமையல் பண்ணவேண்டிய அவசியமில்லை, அதற்கான எந்தொரு தேவையுமில்லை, அங்கே பலங்களையும் காய்களை பரித்து சாப்பிடலாம்.
You look at the Genesis chapter one verse thirty, we see very clearly, God is telling that, "I have given every green herb to all the living things."
நாம் இக்கு தெளிவாகதை நாம் ஆதியாகும் முதலதிகாரம் முப்பதாமஸ்னத்திலே படிக்கிறோம். பூமிலுள்ள சகல மிருக ஜீவன்களுக்கும் ஆகாய்துள்ள சகல பரவிகளுக்கும் நான் சகல பசுமயான சகல பூண்டுகளையும் ஆகாரமாகக் கொடுத்தேன்.
Yeah, green herb, very clearly, green herb means speaks about chlorophyll which produces food.
பசுமயான சகல பூண்டுகள் அப்படின்னு சொன்னால், அது அந்த ஆகாரம், அது தயாரம், அது தயாரிக்கிற அந்த க்லோரோபில்கள் நமக்கு கிடைக்கும்.
So God is expected that all should be a vegetarian.
அகவே தேவன் எதிர்பார்க்குறது எல்லாரும் அவர்கள் சைவ சாப்பாடு சாப்பிடவேணும்.
So again, we are going to come to that age where the vegetarian age.
மறுடிமாக அந்த வெஜிடேரியன் காலகட்டத்திற்கு நாம் இப்பொழுது பிரவேசிக்கபோகிறோம்.
Sometimes people ask me whether there's only all vegetarian, only non-vegetarian is not available during the millennial kingdom.
சிலர் விதமாக கேட்பார்கள் பிரதேர், அந்த ஆயிரவர்ஸ அரசாட்சிலே நான் வெஜிலா இங்குக்கு கிடைக்காதா வெஜிடேரியன் மட்டும் தான் கிடைக்கும்.
I think some permissible eleven is there, I think so.
நான் எண்ணைக்கிறேன், எதோ ஒரு குறிப்பிட்ட அலவு கிடைக்குமென்று.
Because in the millennial kingdom, one verse says in I see the S K L chapter forty-seven, there is a fishery development will be there.
அந்த ஆயிரவர்ஸ அரசாட்சின்போது ஒரு குறிப் பெற்று நமக்கு S A K L ல வருகிறது, அங்கே மீன்வளத்துறை இருக்குமென்று.
You read S K L chapter forty-seven verse eight and nine and ten.
S A K L நார்பத்தியேளு எட்டு ஒன்பது பத்து ஆகிய வச்சுங்கள்.
There speaks about the lot of fishes will be there in the dead sea area and people will catch fishes there.
அங்கே அந்த சவக்கடலுக்கு பக்கத்தில் ஏராளமான மீன்கள் கிடைக்குமென்று அதை ஆட்கள் போய் படிப்பார்லென்று நாம் பார்க்கிறோம்.
Yeah, verse nine and ten you lead this then, I see forty, S K L forty-seven verse nine and ten.
எசெக்கில் நார்பத்தி ஏளு எட்டு ஒன்பது பத்து. "அவரென்னை நோக்கி, இந்த தண்ணீர் கிளக்குதேசத்துக்கு புறப்பட்டு போய் வனந்தரவளியாய் ஓடி கடலில் விளும். இது கடலில் பாய்ந்து உள்ளந்தபின்பது தண்ணீர் ஆரோக்கியமாகும். சம்பவிப்பது என்னவென்றால், "இந்த நதி போகுமிடமங்கும் சஞ்சரிக்கும் ஜீவ பிராணிகள் யாவும் புளைக்கும். இந்த தண்ணீர் அங்கே வந்தபடினாலே வெகு ஏராளமான மச்சங்களும் உண்டாயிருக்கும். இந்த நதி போகுமிடமங்குமுள்ள யாவும் ஆரோக்கிப்பட்டு புளைக்கும். அப்பொழுது எங்கேதே துவங்கி, எனக்லா இன் மட்டும் மீன்படிக்கிறவர்கள் அதின் கரையில் நிற்பார்கள்."
Yeah, fishermen will catch fishes at that time.
அந்த நேரத்திலே மீன்படிக்கிறவர்கள் போய் மீன்படிப்பார்கள்.
So it is logically we can say that if there's no eating of fish, there's no catching, though so fish is permissible, I think.
அகவே இப்படியாக நாம் இதை காரணத்தோடு யோசிக்கலாம், அகவே மீன்படிக்கிறவர்கள் இருப்பார்லென்றால் நிச்சயமாக மீன் சாப்பிடவும் நமக்கு அனுமதி இருக்கும்.
Yeah, so it is not strictly vegetarian, some permissible level is there.
அகவே மிகவும் கட்டுப்பாடான ஒரு சைவ சாப்பாடல், ஒரு சில ஆகாரங்கள் கிடைக்கும்.
One thing is sure that in the climate will change, in the food habits and everything change and it is going to be a place where people can live comfortably.
அகவே ஒரு காரியம் மிகவும் நிச்சயம், கால சீதோஷன் நிலையிலே நிச்சயமாற்றம் ஏற்படும். ஜனங்கள் அதிககாலம் மால்வார்கள் நம்மடைய உணவு பலக்கள் லாம் மாற்றமடையும்.
More important than that, that period is a righteous period, righteousness will dull, there is no manipulation in the judgments.
அந்த காலத்தின்போது மிக முக்கேமான ஒரு காரியம், நீதியான ஒரு அரசாட்சி நடக்கும், எந்தொரு அனீதியும் எங்கும் நடைபடாது.
Jesus Christ is the righteous judge, he will judge and we are going to rule with him.
இயேசுக்ருஸ்வே நீதியான நியாயதிபதியாகிறது போகுறார், அவர் நியாயின் தீர்ப்பா, நாம் இல்லாரும் அவரோடு கூட அரசாட்சி செய்வோம்.
I always wonder what type of authority we will get to rule, I don't know.
எனக்காற்றியமாகிறது குமேப்பொழுதுமே நாம் எவிதமான அதிஹாரம் நமக்கு கொடுக்கப்படும், என்ன அரசாட்சி செய்வோமென்று.
If we suffer with him, we will reign with him, that is what the Bible says.
வேதம் நமக்கு என்ன சொல்லுகிறது என்றால், அவரோடு கூட பாடுபட்டால், அவரோடு கூட அரசாட்சியும் நாம் செய்வோம்.
Jokingly, I used to say that at least the Lord should make us a district collector or something like that, at least, isn't it?
நான் நகச்சு யாகி படினான் சொல்லுவேன், ஒரு மாவட்டத்தின் கலெக்டராவாவது நம்மை தேவன் ஆக்குவிடவேணுமென்று.
Some ruling will be there, God will give some authority to rule and that is the kingdom of God.
எதோ ஒரு பங்கின் அரசாட்சி நமக்கு நிச்சயம் கொடுப்பார், கர்த்தர் தேவனோடு கூட அரசாட்சி செய்வோம்.
So that we see that it is going to be a righteous judgment.
அகவே இப்பொழுது ஒரு காலம் வரப்போகுறது அப்பொழுது நீதியான அரசாட்சி நமக்கு வரும்.
And the second. Second thing, the fourth, fifth thing is that they are mentioned.
அகவே அவர்கள் குறிப்பிட்டு இருக்கிற இந்தாவது காரியம்.
Yeah, come to the Daniel chapter nine.
நானில் ஒன்பதாம அதிஹாரத்திற்கு வாருங்கள்.
There it is mentioned about that the sealing of the prophecy is mentioned.
அந்த இடத்திலே திருக்கதரசுங்கள் முத்தரிக்கப்படுகிற காரியத்தைப் பற்றி பார்க்கிறோம்.
Yeah, Daniel chapter nine.
நானில் ஒன்பதாம அதிஹாரம்.
And we see that verse twenty-four is this list is given.
எந்த பட்டியிலானது இருவத்துணாந்தா வச்சுங்கள்.
Last portion, you please read.
அந்த வச்சுங்கள் கடைசி பகுதியை வாசிங்கள்.
To seal up the vision and the prophecy.
திருக்கதரசுநத்தையும் திருக்கதரசுநத்தையும் முத்தரிக்கிறதற்கு.
That is the fifth thing.
அதான் இந்தாவது காரியம்.
What does it mean by to seal up the vision and the prophecy?
திருக்கதரசுநத்தையும் திருக்கதரசுநத்தையும் முத்தரித்தல் என்றால் என்ன?
To seal up vision and prophecy means God has given a lot of prophecy related with the nation of Israel.
இந்த திருக்கதரசுநம் திருக்கதரசுநம் என்று சொன்னால், தேவன் இஸ்ரவேல் ஜனங்களைக் குறித்த ஏராளமான திருக்கதரசுங்கள் சொல்லியிருக்கிற.
Many of the prophecies God has made about Israel has never fulfilled in the history.
அந்த இஸ்ரவேல் ஜனங்களைக் குறித்து தேவன் சொல்லியிருக்கிற அனேக திருக்கதரசுங்கள் இன்னும் சரித்திரத்தில் அது நிறைவேறவில்லை.
For example.
ஒரு உதாரணத்திற்கு.
God has told Abraham that you look at this land, all the land from the sea, Mediterranean sea to the Euphrates river, I will give to you.
தேவன் ஆப்ராமை பார்த்து சொன்னார், இந்த மத்தியதரைக் கடல் பகுதியிலிருந்து எல்லையிலிருந்து யூப்ரேடிஸ் நதி வரைக்குமுள்ள அந்த தேசம் அனைத்தையும் உன்னை அசத்தில் கொடுப்பேன்.
That's called a royal grant, a huge land was promised to Abraham and his descendants.
ஆப்ராமுக்கும் அவர்கள் சந்ததிக்கும் இபேர்பட்ட ஒரு பெரிய நிலப்பரப்பு வாக்களிக்கப்பட்டது.
As from today, so far they never ruled that much area.
இதுவரைக்குமாக அவர்கள் இன்னும் இவ்வளவு பெரிய நிலப்பரப்பை அவர்கள் ஆண்டதில்லை.
Today if you look at the nation, it is a small country the size of Kerala.
இன்றைக்கு அந்த தேசத்தினுடைய அலவைபார்த்தால், மிக சிறிய ஒரு தேசமாக ஒரு கேரலாமானிலத்தின் அலவைக்கு ஒத்த அலவை இருக்கும்.
They never got so much of land.
அவர்கள் அவ்வளவு பெரிய தேசம் இதுவரைக்கும் கிடைக்கவில்லையாவது.
Whether God has not done justice to them.
இவர்களுக்கு தேவன் இன்னும் நீதியை சரிக்கட்டவில்லையா?
Why God did not give that much land which was promised to Abraham?
ஏன் ஆப்ராமுக்கு வாக்களித்த அந்த தேசம் முழுவதேயும் அவர்களுக்கு இன்னும் கொடுக்கவில்லை.
After four ninety years.
நானுட்டிர்த்தொன்று ஆண்டுகளுக்குப்.
God is going to give the whole promises that God has made to Israel.
தேவன் இதுவரைக்கு மிஸ்ரவேலுக்கு அளித்த எல்லா வாக்குதததேயும் அவர் நிறைவேற்றி கொடுப்பார்.
That is the meaning of seal up the vision and the prophecy or to fulfill the visions and the prophecy, everything will be fulfilled at that time.
அதுதான் திருக்கதரசுநத்தையும் திருக்கதரசுநத்தையும் முத்தரித்தல் என்கிற வார்த்தையின் அர்த்தமாகிறது எல்லா திருக்கதரசுங்களும் நிறைவேற்றி கொடுப்பார்.
And the next thing, the sixth thing you look at that.
அடுத்து நாம் பார்க்கிற ஆராவது காரியம்.
Verse twenty-four, the last one.
இருவத்தினாந்தா வச்சுங்கள் கடைசி காரியம்.
To anoint the most holy, please read the scripture.
அந்த வேதத்தினிங்கள் வாசிங்கள், மக்காபரிசுத்தமுள்ளவரே அபிஷேகம்பண்ணுகிறதற்கும்.
Actually, to anoint the most holy, he is never used, that particular phrase was never used in relation with human beings.
இந்த மனிதர்களுக்கு சம்மந்தபட்ட நில்லமேலே, இந்த மக்காபரிசுத்தமுள்ளவரே அபிஷேகம்பண்ணுதல் என்கிற வார்த்தையானது பயன்படுத்தப்படவில்லை.
The anoint the most holy is always used in relation with the tabernacle anoint dedication as well as the dedication of the temple of Solomon.
மக்காபரிசுத்ததை அபிஷேகம்பண்ணுதல் என்கிற வார்த்தையானது, சாலுமோனின் தேவாளையும் அதேபோல அந்த கூடாரம் ஆசாஸ்தலம் முண்டுபண்ணபட்ட காரியத்தின்போது, பிரதிஷ்டையின்போது மாத்திரமே பயன்படுத்தப்படுது.
Or in other words.
அல்லது வேறொரு வழில் சொல்லப்படும்.
After four ninety years.
நானுட்டிர்த்தொன்று ஆண்டுகளுக்குப்.
God is going to dedicate a temple in Jerusalem.
தேவன் இருசுலேமிலே அவர் அந்த தேவாளைத்தை ஸ்தாபிப்பார்.
And that temple will be the most magnificent temple that they ever had seen in the history of Israel.
இஸ்ரவேல் சரித்திரத்திலே இதுவரை கண்டிராத ஒரு மிக பிரமாண்டமான ஒரு தேவாளையமாகது இருக்கபோகுறது.
If you read the book of S K L, we read about the millennial temple is mentioned there.
எசெக்கில் புச்சகத்திலே நாம் படிக்கும்போது, ஆயிரவர்ஸ அரசாட்சியின்போது இருக்கபோகுற ஆளைத்தைப் பற்றிப் பார்க்கிறோம்.
Around seven chapters are devoted to describe about the coming temple in Jerusalem.
இருசுலேமிலே இனிமேல் வரப்போகுறந்தா தேவாளைத்தைக் குறித்து ஏல அதிஹாரங்கள் பேசுகிறது.
Probably God is telling to Daniel at the end of the four ninety years, "I am going to dedicate, I am going to anoint the most holy that is the temple of God."
அங்கே ஒருவேளே தானியேலுக்கு கர்த்தர் எவிதமாக வெளிப்படுத்தினால், அந்த நானுட்டிர்த்தொன்று ஆண்டுகளுக்குப் பிறிப்பாடு, அந்த இருசுலேம் பட்டனத்திலே நான் மிகபெரிய தேவாளைத்தை ஸ்தாபிக்கபோகுற அதை அபிஷேகம்பண்ணுவேன்.
So these are the six purpose of four ninety years.
அகவே இதுதான் இந்த நானுட்டிர்த்தொன்று ஆண்டுகளுடைய ஆர் நோக்கங்கள்.
The first three deals with the sin of the nation of Israel.
அதிலே முதல் மூண்டு நோக்கங்கள் இஸ்ரவேல் தேசத்தினுடைய பாவத்தைக் குறித்து சொல்லுகிறது.
The last three is speaking about the threefold blessing that God is going to give to the nation of Israel.
கடைசி மூண்டு நோக்கங்கள் இஸ்ரவேல் ஜனங்களுக்கு கர்த்தர் கொடுக்கபோகுற ஆசிர்வாங்களைப் பற்றிபேசுகிறது.
So here you can see in the screen that all these three things.
இங்கே இந்த திரையிலே இதை எல்லாவற்றின் இங்கள் பார்க்கலாம்.
Number four, the everlasting righteousness I explained to you.
நான் உங்களுக்கு விளக்கின அந்த நான்காவது காரியம் மித்திய நீதியை வருவிக்கிறதற்கு.
Number five, to seal up the vision and the prophecy.
ஐந்தாவது திருக்கதரசுநத்தையும் திருக்கதரசுநத்தையும் முத்திரைபோடுகிறதற்கு.
And the sixth one, to anoint the most holy.
ஆராவது மக்காபரிசுத்தமுள்ளவரே அபிஷேகம்பண்ணுகிறதற்கு.
Now, I hope you understood the purpose of four ninety years.
இப்பொழுது நீங்கள் இந்த நானுட்டிர்த்தொன்று வருடங்களுடைய நோக்கத்தைப் புரிந்திருப்பீர்கள் என்றால் நினைக்கிறேன்.
Now we will go and look into little bit of, of course the chart will be difficult for you to understand now.
இந்த வரைபடமானது நீங்கள் படித்து புரிந்துகொள்வதற்கு சற்றுகடிணமாக இருக்குமென்று நினைக்கிறேன்.
Most the words and all has changed up and down, so it is not clear.
அதிலே அதிகமான வார்த்தைகள் மேலும் கிளிமாக மாற்றபட்டிருக்கிறது, அகவே நேரடியாக பார்ப்பதற்கு நமக்கு முடியாது.
I will explain you, just wait, wait, look at this thing.
நான் உங்களுக்கு விளக்குகிறேன், இத காரியத்தைப் பாருங்கள்.
We have seen the three periods of seventy weeks.
நாம் இந்த ஏலுவது வாரத்தை மூண்டு காலகட்டமாகப்.
I have already explained to you.
எற்கனவே உங்களுக்கு நான் விளக்கினேன்.
So the seventy weeks are divided into three portions.
அந்த ஏலுவது வாரங்களும் மூண்டு பகுதிகளாகப் பிரிக்கப்பட்டிருக்கிறது.
First one, seven weeks.
முதல் பகுதி ஏழு வாரங்கள்.
How many years?
எத்தனை ஆண்டுகள்?
Forty-nine years.
நார்பத்துண்பது ஆண்டுகள்.
The second period of sixty-two weeks.
இரண்டாவது காலகட்டமானது அறுவத்திரண்டு வாரங்கள்.
How many years?
Chapter seven verse twenty-five, you read there.
Nigalva singal daani el, elavad adhigaaram, adinoda iruvaththi ayindadu vasunathil, unnadamaanavarekku virudamaha vaarthegale pessi, unnadamaanurude parashutthavangale odikki, kaalangalayum, pramanangalayum, matran, pramanangali maatranenipan. Avargal oru kaalamum, kaalangalum, arekkaalamum, sellemattum.
Yeah, they shall be, that means Israel will be handed over into the hands of Antichrist.
Adavadi israelerilandhi christvin kaillo, avargal opukodukapaduvar.
And Antichrist will persecute the Jewish people.
And Antichristu yudaregalai ubathramam sayvan.
How much time?
Yelovu kaalam?
A time?
Oru kaalamum?
Time?
Kaalangalum?
And half a time?
Adirkaparam arekkaalamum.
Means?
Anudaratum?
A time means one year.
Oru kaalam intusunal orandu.
Times means two year.
Kaalangalum intusunal irundhaandugal.
Half a time means?
Arekkaalam intusunal?
Half year.
Aray varudam.
So total?
Agari ottumathumaha?
Three and a half?
Moonrayaandugal.
Now, this is a one phrase we see there.
This is the name in here parkakudiyavaru vaarthai padam.
There another phrase which we see, come to the book of Revelation.
Machumoruvakkyathai naam velipaduttil viseshasthalenam parkrom.
In the book of Revelation, we read in the chapter eleven verse two, you please read.
Velipaduttenne viseshasthalen, padunavaram adhigaaram paninana masunathalene parukrom.
There we see that, the, the temple mound, or the temple mound will be, trampled down by the Antichrist and these people is mentioned that it will be trampled down.
Here, ah, anndhandhi christu, avanoodukooda irukkavargalum, avargal siyonmalay, adathupan, parashutthamalay, avargal midithupoduvargal endru.
Yeah, you read the verse two, eleven verse two.
Padunavaram adhigaaram, naamasram, aalayathirukku purambae irukraprakaram, prajadyaarukku kodukkapattabadiyal, adai alavamal purambakkipodu, parashutthanagaratte, avargal narpatthirundu maadamalavum midippargal.
Yeah, forty-two months, they will trample or destroy the temple mound.
Andhapparashutthanagaratte, avargal narpatthirundu maadamalavum midit, midithukondurpar.
So forty-two months means how many years?
Narpatthirundu maadangal intusunal, ettanayandugal?
Three and a half years?
Moonrayaandugal.
Right, three and a half years?
Moonrayaandugal.
Now, again, you, verse three, you look at that, eleven verse three.
Madimaha, moonramasunathiparungal padunavaram adhigaaram, moonramasunam, ennudaya irundu saachigalum, rettu vashtaram mudittikkondurukkavargalai, aayiruthirunuttharuvathu naalalavum, dirkadarasanan sollumbadi.
See, again, the usage, you look at that, one thousand two hundred and sixty days.
Madimaha angiparkrom, aayiruthirunuttharuvathu naal.
Yeah, one thousand two hundred and sixty days means, how many months? Divide by thirty, you look that.
Aayiruthirunutthi aruvathu, naatkal intusunal, ettanay maadangal, adai, muppadaal ningal vahungal?
Forty-two? It's clear now?
Narpatthirundu maad.
See, these three usages you notice.
Ah, with the moonra, ah, vasunangalay, ningal gavningal.
Time, times and half a time.
Kaalam, kaalangal, arekkaalam.
Secondly?
Irundavadu?
Forty-two months.
Narpatthirundu maadangal.
And here days are mentioned, one thousand two hundred and sixty days.
Here naatkal kanakasella padrakkaradu, aayiruthirunutthi aruvathu naatkal.
This is all speaking about three and a half years.
Ivegal ellam, moonrayaandugalai kurithu pesigaradu.
And in that, one year is calculated as three sixty days.
Idile orandu, orandrukku, munutthi aruvathu naatkal endru kanakku vaykappadrakkaradu.
So three sixty days into three and a half years, it will come to one thousand two hundred and sixty days.
Ah, we, o, moonrayaandugal, munutthi aruvathu naatkal engrakkanakire, namakkavarakoodiya kanakku, aayiruthirunutthi aruvathu naatkal.
So from this calculation, we understand that prophetic year is not three sixty-five days, prophetic year is three sixty days.
Ah, we, idile rinne naam purindukolukaradu, dirkadarasanan, ah, ah, andu endru sollumbodo, orandukku munutthi aruvathaindhanatkal alla, munutthi aruvathu naatkal.
Yeah, so you multiply three sixty into four eighty-three years.
Ah, we, ippuladu munutthi aruvathai, naanuthi enbathimoonra andugalukku, andugaloodu ningal perukkingal?
So one lakh seventy-three thousand eight hundred and eighty days is coming.
Apriyaha perekinnaal namakkavaruvaadu, orulachthi yelvathimoonra aayiruthi ennuthi enbadu.
See, from that March fourteenth, exactly, one can easily understand at what time the Messiah will come.
Ah, we, oruvaanal, idai naam kanakidumodo, migai elimayaha, messiah yappuladu varuvarendru kanakidamudiyum.
Very clearly mentioned, after sixty-two weeks, the Messiah shall be cut off.
Adirkaparam migateli vaha parkakudiyakariyam, aruvathrindu varangal mudivadaimbo, messiah sangarikappaduvar.
Even though the calculation is available with the Jewish people.
Indhakanakkaanadu, yudajanangalal purindukalakoodi nilamailayirundhalum.
They would have easily calculated at what time the Messiah will come.
Messiah yappuladu varuvarendru elimayaha kanakittupathirukkalam.
But unfortunately, they failed to understand this calculation.
Anal duradasthavastamaha, indhakanakkaayavargal purindukolvatharkuttavari ponaargal.
So on April sixth, AD thirty-two.
Ah, we, keepi, muppattirundavandu, Aprilmaadam aaramtheedi.
That is the day on which the sixty-nine weeks are completed.
Andhanaldaan, aruvaththi oru, aruvaththi unbadu varangal mudivadaigranal.
On that day, what happened?
Andhanalile, enne nadandadu?
That is very, very interesting.
Adi migamiga swarisiamanadu?
It is on that day?
Andhanalile?
The Lord Jesus ascended into Jerusalem upon a donkey.
Andavara, Eesukrisu, Ersalem nagarathirukul, kalathainmail, eeri vandhar.
And he is presenting himself as the king of the Jewish people.
Israelerjanangalukpundaha, thaan, oru raja enbadu, avarkaatti, kaatinaar.
And everybody is singing a song, hosanna, hosanna, they are loudly singing.
Avargal, yaavaram, hosanna, hosunaa, endru sulli, satthamittar parithaargal.
That day is normally called as the Palm Sunday.
Andhanalannadu valakkamaha, adu, kurutholainai irundraalakkepadukkardu.
Yeah, on the Palm Sunday, Jesus gloriously entered into the Jerusalem city.
Andhkurutholainai, nayirundre, andavara, Eesukrisu, migavettu, oru, 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 jakeembeerathodukooda pravesita.
But the Jewish leaders, they were upset about it.
Anal yudathalavergalal, adai otthukollamudiyavillai.
Yeah, and they said to Jesus, tell them not to shout like this.
Avargal Esuipathusunnarul, ivargal satthamidaadu irukkumidikke neer katneyidumendru.
Jesus Christ said that if they are not shouting, the stones will shout.
Esukrisu appaladusunnar, ivargal ippuladukku kupinaavittal, indhakallugalekku kupidumendru.
See, the Jewish people rejected the Messiah when he presented to them.
Paringal, yudajanangal, avar, avargalukpundaha, messiahaha, kaatinaalum, avargal neragaritthaargal.
Really, they could have accepted him as the king?
Avare rajaaha, eethrakulukaradukka, avargalukkamanamillai?
They would have accepted him as the king?
Avargal rajaaha, eethrakondurundhal?
Definitely, he would have made the messianic kingdom, he would have established the messianic kingdom.
Nichimahavi, avar, messiahvilde rajiyathai stabithtrundurupar.
But when he entered, they were, eyes were blind, and they could not understand the Messiah properly.
Anal avar ulle pravesikkumbodo, avarudekandal krudakappadrimel, messiahavi, avargal kaanamudiyavillai.
Now, please read Luke's Gospel, chapter nineteen.
Ippladu daiusaidu, Luca, patthunmadhamadhigaaratte vaasiingal.
Verse forty-two, forty-one and forty-two, we will read.
Narpatthi undu, narpatthirundaiya vasunangale vaasikilam.
Yeah, Jesus is entering into the temple.
Eesukrisu, avar aalayathukul pravesikrar, avar samibumai vandabodhu, nagaratte partha, adarkaha, kannirvittaaladu?
Yeah, he looked at Jerusalem city and started weeping for the city of Jerusalem.
Avar Ersalem nagaratte vandupathupodhu, andhnaagathirkaa, avar kannirvittaaladu?
The reason is mentioned there.
Karname angeseella padrakkaradu?
He looked at Jerusalem and crying for Jerusalem.
Avar Ersalemai partha, adarkaha, kannirvittaaladu?
If you want to know how he was crying?
Avar yappudi aladharendru ningal ariyaviruminal?
Please turn with me to Matthew, chapter twenty-three.
Ningal Mateyu, iruvathimoonramadhigaaratthirukku daiusaidu ennoodukoodathiruppengal?
In Matthew, chapter twenty-three, we see that he is looking at Jerusalem and weeping and crying at Jerusalem.
Mateyiruvathimoonramadhigaaratthile, andhErsalemai partha, avar kannirvitte, alukkudyakariyati parukrom.
Come to Matthew, chapter twenty-three.
Mateyiruvathimoonramadhigaaratthirukku varungal?
Verse thirty-seven onwards, you read.
Muppatti elam vasunamadarkondu vaasikro.
This is what he was weeping.
Ippiditaan avar solli aladhar?
Yeah, char, read that.
Adina vaasikilam, Ersalemai, Ersalemai, dirkadarisigale kolaisaidu, unnadathir anupappattavargale, kallerigiravalai, koli than kunjagale, than sirugulinkile, kutti seyrthukollum mannamaha, naan ettanaydaramo, unpuligale, kutti seyrthukollamana daayirundan?
Oh, Jesus is looking at Jerusalem and weeping, oh Jerusalem, Jerusalem.
Eesukrisu, Ersalemai partha, ippidi solli aladhar, Ersalemai, Ersalemai?
I would have protected you.
Naan unnai paadhukathirundrapen?
As a hen is protecting the little ones, I would have protected you.
Devan avarelai parthusolukrar, Ersalem, ungalukpundaha, hidikappadum.
Not only that, your house, your city of God, the temple is going to be destroyed.
Adumattumal, devunadee nagaramaagia, andhdevunadee vedum, adum, hidikappadum.
And verse thirty-nine, look at that.
Muppatti unthammasunathile paringal?
I say unto you?
Naan ungalukku solukre?
Ye shall not see me.
Ningal, inimel, enne, idumudhal, enne kaanadhiruppeer?
Hence, ye shall say, blessed is he that cometh in the name of the Lord.
Kathrudheenamathinale, varugravas, thottarikappadtavendru ningal sollamal?
He rejected the nation.
Navar, andhadesaththi purakkandithupot?
Now, he said, you will day, one day, you will cry, blessed is the man who cometh in the name of the Lord.
Orunaliene, ningal aladu, pulamuvirgal, kathrudheenamathinale, varugravas, thottarikappadavendru?
Up to that, I am not going to come to you.
Adu, adu ningal sollumbalavirku, naan, ungalmattilae varadhiruppe?
After four ninety years.
Naanittuthunnuu andugalukku?
When Jesus is coming on the glory, on the mound of Oliva.
Andavara, Eesukrisu, mahimiaga, andhOliva malainmail varumbodo?
At that time, they will say?
Andhanerathir, avargal solluvargal?
Blessed is he that cometh in the name of the Lord.
Kathrudheenamathinale, varugravas, thottarikappadtavendru?
Their eyes will be open.
Avarudekandal tirakkappadum?
They will understand, he is the true Messiah.
Ivardan, mayyaan, messiahendru, avargal purindukolvar?
He is the real one who came to die for them.
Avargalukaaha, unmayahave, marikavandamessiah, ivradaanendru?
Up to that?
Aduvarikkum?
Up to that time, the Israel is partially blinded, they are blinded.
Andhkaalam marekkamaha, israelerigaludekandal marekkappadut krudakappadrimel?
Their eyes are not open.
Avarudekandal tirakkappadavillai?
Come back to Luke's Gospel, chapter twenty-nine.
Luca, eludanasu, visesham, patthunmadhamadhigaaratthirukvarungal?
So we have seen that Jesus was looking at Jerusalem.
Ningeparingal, Esu, Ersalemai nokkipartha?
When he saw the city, he started crying.
Nagaratte parthupodhu, adarkaha, avar kannirvittaaladu?
See, look at verse forty-two, what he is saying?
Narpatthirundhamasunathile, enne solukranndu paringal, unakkukidetthi, indhanalilaagilum, unsamadhanathukke, eethravigale, ni, arindhrundhaayaanala, nalamaayirukkum, ippladu, avagel, unkandalukku, marevaayirukkardu?
Yeah, look at that.
Ningeparingal?
In this thy day?
Indhanalilaagilum?
This day?
Indhanal?
Oh Jerusalem, this day is meant for your redemption.
Oh Ersalemai, indhanalannadu, unmeepirkaaha, kurikappadthanal?
Today, the sixty-ninth week is completed.
Indreku, aruvaththi unbadu varamannadu, niragupirigradu?
Next is seventieth week.
Adirkaduthi, eluvadavadu varathin thuvakam?
Seventieth week is meant for your peace.
Andheluvaththi unbadu, andheluvadavadu varamannadu, unsamadhanathirkaa?
I came as the king to establish the kingdom.
Naan, ingerajiyaththi stabikkumidikke, rajaaha, naan vand?
But unfortunate thing is that Jewish leaders were blind, they could not understand the Messiah.
Dukkharamana kariyaminvindral, yudathalavergalal, andhmessiahave kaanamudiyavillai, kandal, adu marekkappadtrud?
Look at that, this thy day?
Ningepavaringal, indhanalil?
The things with belonging unto thy peace?
Unsamadhanathukke, eethravigale?
It is meant for your peace?
Idu unsamadhanathirkaaha, kurikappadthanal?
But what happened to you?
Anal, unakkenenadandadu?
Look at that, next part, but now they are hidden from their eyes.
Anal, ippladu, avagel, unkandalukku marevaayirukkardu?
Oh, the Jewish people were blind to understand the Messiah.
Oh, ido, ido, indh, israelerigal, yudaregal, messiahave kaanavarekandu krudakarindu?
The day of their peace was just escaped from them.
Appriyaya, avargalukkavaramirindhasamadhanam, avarleavittu, poivittadu?
So sixty-nine weeks came to an end.
Appriyaha, aruvaththi unbadu varam, oru mudivirku vendadu?
God could not start the seventieth week.
Andavaraal, eluvadavadu varaththi, thuvanga mudiyavillai?
The reason why God did not start, because the Jewish nation rejected the Messiah.
Andheluvadavadu varaththi, andavaraal, thuvanga mudiyadatharkukkaranum, yudajanangal, messiahave purakkandithaargal?
Three things are mentioned, what will happen after sixty-nine weeks?
Moonrukariyengal, andhharuvaththi unbadu varaththirukku, pin, enne nadakkumendu sollapadrakkaradu?
So that, we see that, probably, the time is up? Uh, look at that, we see that, events during the gap between sixty-nine and seventieth week?
Ningeparingal, andharuvaththi unbadu varaththirukku, eluvadavadu varaththirukku, medayay, nadakkapograsamavam?
And come to book of Daniel again, you can understand that.
Madimaha, daaniel, busogathirukvandhal, ungalal purindukolamud?
The book of Daniel, chapter nine, we read.
Daaniel, unbadhamadhigaaratthile vaasikro?
Verse twenty-six.
Iruvaththi aravadu vasunam?
Yeah, look at that.
Adiparingal, andhharuvaththirundu varangalukku, pinbu?
Yeah, after sixty-two weeks.
Haruvathrindu varangalukku, pinbu?
Or after sixty-ninth week.
Alladu, aruvaththi unbadu varaththirukku, pinbu?
That means we have to count the seven earlier, sixty-two plus seven, sixty-nine weeks.
Adirk, ah, ah, adinodaaratum, adirkpundaha, vandha, eluvarangalay, seshunam kanakidavendru?
Look at that, three things are happening.
Ningeparingal, moonrukariyam nadkradu?
In the screen, you look at that, first, the Messiah shall be cut off.
Ningeparingal, laanadu, andhthreile, ungalakka, uh, elidivaitthirukken, messiah sangarikappaduvar?
The secondly?
Irundavadu?
The city and the sanctuary shall be destroyed.
Nagaramum, parashutthastalamum, adu, alikkappadum?
Verse twenty-six, you look at that, it is mentioned.
Irutharamasunathile, ningal parthal, adusellapadrakkaradu?
The third thing?
Moonravadukariyam?
The worldwide scattering of the Jewish and their suffering.
Yudaregal, olagankum, sidharadikappadakkar, padudrakariyamum, avargudee paaadugalum?
It is mentioned like this, the end of it shall be with the flood, and unto the end of the war, desolations are determined.
Ippriyaha, elidavadrakkaradu, adinmudivu, jalapravahum, poodaayirukkum, mudivuvariyanthum, yuttumum, nasumum, undaha, neemikappadthadu?
Very clearly predicted three things that will happen after sixty-nine weeks.
Migateli vaha, ingeganikappadrakkaradu, adavadharuvaththi unbadu varangalin mudivile, enne nadakkumendru?
After sixty-nine weeks, we know that the people of Israel rejected their Messiah.
Haruvaththi unbadu varangalukku, pirpaadu, namakkutteriyum, yudaregal, avargal, messiahave purakkandithaargal?
After Palm Sunday, on the next Sunday, next Friday, we see that they crucified the Messiah.
Avargal, andhkurutholainai irukku, aduthabadiyaha, vandavelliklamaila, avargal, messiahave sangarik?
After the Palm Sunday, after few days, the leaders gathered together, they planned how to kill Messiah.
Andh, andh, andhkurutholainai, nayirukku, pirpaadu, vandhavursula naatkalile, yudaregal, undrudhirundu, avargal, aloosarepanirakal, indhivanay, yappudi kolaisseyavendru?
And they schemed everything, and they decided that somehow, we should eliminate this man.
Avargal, udanidiyaha, palathittangalthitti, indhamanidhanay, yappudiavadu, naam, kondruvadaavendru?
We know that they called Judas, and they bribed, and given thirty pieces of silver, and they captured him.
Appriyaha, yudaseyalaithaargal, avanukku, muppada vellikasigal koduthu, avare, pidithivittaargal?
So many manipulations they have done.
Anneekarikangali, avargal, avargal, maathi, avargal?
And Daniel is briefly telling?
Daaniel, adisurukkamaha, solukrar?
Saying, the Messiah shall be cut off.
Messiah sangarikappaduvar?
They will crucify him after sixty-nine weeks.
Haruvaththi unbadu varangalukku, pirpaadu, avare, siluvailaadipar?
Now, look at that verse, just let us carefully look into that verse.
Andhvasunathite, marudimparingal, gavnamaha vaasiingal?
The, after sixty-two weeks, the Messiah shall be cut off.
Andharuvaththirundu varangalukku, pinbu, messiah sangarikappaduvar?
But not for himself.
Analum, tamakaha, alla?
It's a beautiful statement they have made there.
Avarulangai, sunna, migalakhaanoru, vakkyamahumadu?
Not for himself.
Tamakaha alla?
See, there are lot of translations, I was going through, to understand the meaning of that word.
Andhvasunathite, inpurindukolvatharkukke, eralamanaangila, mulibairpugale, naam parthaal?
I just went examine various translation.
Naan, palveeru, mulibairpue, naam parkumbodo?
Around five translation I was observing.
Adile, naam, aindu, mulibairpugale, naam gavnitthi?
I don't know in Tamil, what is the meaning, the Messiah shall be cut off, then next portion?
Messiah sangarikappaduvar, analum, tamakaha alla?
Means, not for himself, not for himself, that's the same like English, KJV is the same thing, not for himself.
Analum, tamakaha alla?
He died not for himself.
Avar, tamakaha, avar marikavillai?
It is for you and me, he died?
Adu, ungalukaahum, enakkaahum, avar maritha?
He is died as a substitute to the sacrifice.
Avar, namakkaha, badilalana, baliyaha, maritha?
Jesus came here to die for you and me.
Andavara, Eesukrisu, ungalukaahum, enakkaahum, maripadasu?
One of the meaning of that word is that Jesus died on the cross of Calvary as a substitution to the sacrifice.
Ah, we, indhvaarthiin, oruartam, ennavaha, irukkardundral, andhkalvarisiluvaila, andavara, Eesukrisu, namakkubadilalaha, marikumadivandha?
Oh, what a wonderful thing he has done for our sake.
Oh, namakkaha, avar, ennavararmiyana, kariyathiseyidurukrar?
The second one, another translation we have, I went through?
Uh, venuoru mulibairpue, naam gavnitthi?
The translation says, the Messiah shall be cut off, although not, although nothing of guilt was in him.
Messiah, avar, tamraya, tammeel, endhakuttramam illaadiirundum, avar maritha?
No guilt was in him.
Avaradathle, endhakuttramam kaanappadavillai?
He was sinless person.
Avar, paavam illaavan, avarahirun?
No, see, look at his judgment, everyone who was examined, they said that he has not done anything that is worthy of death.
Avarudee, visarne, kurithna, parthomanaal, illarum sunnarakal, ivar, marnatthirukke, eduvaanakuttramunndrum, seyavillai?
The Roman governor, pilot said, I could not find anything fault in him.
Roma, alunaraana, andh pilathusunnar, ivanadathle, naam, endhakutradheem kaanavendru?
He has not done anything that is worthy of that.
Marnatthirukke, eduvaanakuttramunndrum, ivan seyavillai?
He is sinless.
Ivar, paavam illaadav?
Judas who betrayed him, he said, I have betrayed the innocent blood.
Avare kaatti koduthu, yudasusunnan, kuttramillaadharaththathai, naam kaatti koduthendru?
You know, the pilot's wife said that, my dear, don't interfere with that man, he is a righteous man.
Pilathumudaya, manavi, avanai parthusunnar, indhniidima, indh, indhmanushinathle, ni, unndrum, vaitukollavendam, ivar, niidimaanendru?
See, look at the pilot, whatever the public asks, the leaders ask, whenever they ask, he said, yes, 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 he agreed to do everything what the public was asking.
Pilathuvaiparthal, podujanangal, ennakke, kettarul, adaya, amamendru, sari sari, endru sulli, avarudekavirupathay, neeravetchikoduthaan?
And they said, leave the barba, barba, he left the barba.
Barabasi, viduviyamendusunnarakal, avanai viduvithivittaan?
And whatever the Jewish leaders and the public was crying, Judas, this pilot did everything.
Andh yudajanangalum, andh yudathalavergalum, enne satthamittakkettarul, adaya, pilathusaidukoduthaan?
Only one thing he did not listen, you know?
Orukkariyathirukkadaan, avan sevisaykavillai?
You know what he did not listen?
Avan, edharuksevisaykavillai, endru terima?
He did not listen his wife's voice.
Avanadee, manaviunadee, pechai, mattum, avan?
All the multitudes, they cried, he listened to them.
Ellathiralana, kuttathar, sunna kariyathirukka, avan sevisay?
His wife said, don't interfere with that righteous man.
Andhniidimaanoodukooda, ni, unndrum, vaitukollavendamendru, manavi sunnar?
That is the only thing pilot did not do.
Adu daan, pilathusayadu, orayakariyam?
Somebody was telling, if you'd have listened to the wife, you'd have saved his life, isn't it?
Oru, ippidusunnan, manaviunpechakketrundha, avanunadee, walkai, kaathukondurukkam?
Yes, that is true.
Amadu unmai?
He failed to listen to the voice of his wife.
Avanadee, manaviunpechakketpaderukka, avan maruthuponan?
You see the centurion who crucified him?
Avanai, silva, avare, siluvaila, arindhanutthukadupadiyeparingal?
Truly, he is a righteous man.
Mayyaahave, ivar, niidimaanendusunnan?
Truly, he is the son of God.
Mayyaahave, ivar, devakumaran?
Everyone, you see, everyone was a, one accord, they were saying that, he was sinless and a perfect man.
Paringal, illarum, oresathathoodukudasunnarul, ivar, niidimaan, ivar, ivar, paavam illaadavendru?
In him, there was no sin.
Avaradathil, paavam illai?
He knew no sin.
Avar, paavam ariyadav?
He did no sin.
Avar, paavam sayadav?
Yes, he has, there was no guilt, no sin in him, at they crucified him.
Amam, avaradathre, paavam kaanappadavillai, kuttram kaanappadavillai, irundabodhu, ilmaavare, siluvaila?
Yes, the Messiah was cut off.
Am, messiah sangarikappaduvar?
And another translation says that he will be nothing.
Machumor, mulibairpule, ippidiyahana, parkrom, avar, unndrum illamalakkappaduvar?
Yeah, he was poured out like a drink offering.
Avar, baanabaliyaha, varkappadtha?
His offer his life as a drink offering.
Avarudee, baliyannadu, adu, baanabaliyaha, utrapattadu?
And that is what we read, on the, we understand on the cross of Calvary.
Adithaan, kalvarisiluvaila, naam, parkrom?
And another translation says like that, although not against his will, an intent?
Avar, ifidamaha, naam, venuoru mulibairpule, avar, tanarvamaha, avar, munvandusaydharendru?
They crucified him not forcibly, it is he himself has given his life.
Avare, pidithu, kattayappaduthi, avare, siluvaila, ariyavillai, ivartame, tamaye, ariyamadikopukoduthaan?
He said, I have the right, I have the power to give my life and to take it back.
Avar sunnar, ennede, jeevane, kodupadarkum, adaitthirum, eduthukolvatharkukkavendakadiharamund?
No one could touch Lord Jesus Christ, he permitted them to touch him.
Andavara, Eesukrisu, ivarvaralum, thodakkooda, danaal, avarthame, thodumbadikke, anumadi koduthaan?
So the sacrifice of the Lord Jesus Christ was a voluntary sacrifice.
Ah, we, andavara, Eesukrisu, andh baliyannadu, adu, tanarvamaha, thanaha, munvandukodutha bali?
Although not against his will, he was voluntarily sacrificed for our sake.
Avare, kattayappadutha, vittalum, kodu, avar thanaha, munvandu, baliyahopukoduthaan?
And finally, we read that he shall have nothing for him, or he a humble sacrifice.
Adesili, avar, tamakkana, unndrum, vaitukolladabadikke, baliyana, radavadu, thalmayulla bali?
Yes, in all humility, offered himself as a sacrifice on the cross of Calvary.
Sahalathalmayodu kodu, tamaythame, kalvarisiluvaila, avar, baliyahopukoduthaan?
So that passage where speaks about the Messiah shall be cut off, it's a beautiful passage, describing all the aspect of the death of Lord Jesus Christ.
Ah, we, indh, pagudiannadu, migalakhaanoru, pagudi, adavadu, messiah sangarikappaduvaradu, avar, siluvaila, ariyappattai, ellagounathilindhum, adu, namakarthathai kodukkardu?
Yes, the first thing after sixty-nine weeks is that Messiah shall be cut off.
Am, haruvaththi unbadu varathle, mudivile, nadakkramudalkariyam, messiah sangarik, messiahavin, maranam?
Now, the second thing is mentioned?
Irundavadukariyam, sollapadrakkaradu?
Is the destruction of the second temple.
Adu, irundavadu, devaaliyathinudaya, aliuv? Adu irandavadu devaaliyathinudaya aliuvu.
Now, before going into that, I want to tell you, the, the message and this vision was given to Daniel because he was a man with a great burden for the temple of God.
Thirukunbaha, naan orukkaariyathesellavaramugre, indha darisunam, indha darisunam, danielukka kadeethadarkana karnama ivan, you have udya aalethai kuri th, adigamana karisunudai.
You understand the background of this prayer and how God has revealed him so many truth about the future.
Adavdu, indha awansayda jabathnuudaya pinnani, adavdu edhrigalaathlin naddakpoogarakariyathnuudaya darisunam, awanukvandadarkunudaya pinnani.
We know that Daniel was looking to Jerusalem and he was praying.
Namakutariyam, daniel erisulaimi noke, awan jebithaan.
When he was praying, he had an intention that God allowed to have a temple there in the Jerusalem.
Awan appidi jebitha boda, amanukirindavur vaanjai, devan erisulaimile, oru devaaliyam, devaaliyam kattappadumadikka anumadi kodukkavennam.
See, you know the first temple, Solomon's temple.
Ungalukuthariyam, mudal devaaliyam kattappaduthu, salamon udya devaaliyam.
And when that was there, Daniel was an young boy.
Adu angai niruvappadum boda, daniel sirupayanagirna.
Along with his parents, he might have visited that temple.
Awan thanudya petrooroodukooda pooy, andha devaaliyathai paththirkukoodum.
He had seen the beauty of the first temple of God.
Andha devan udya mudal devaaliyathinudaya alahey, awan paththirupaan.
But when he was captured as a slave, he came to Babylon, he came to know that afterwards, few years, the temple was destroyed.
Ananal, awan siru vaidile, awan sirai padikappattu, Babylonukka konduvarappattan, orusilaandile, andha devaaliyam midikappattadhi, awan arinana.
So, the Nebuchadnezzar and his army completely razed, destroyed the temple and took away all the instruments, all the equipments from the temple, and they came to Babylon.
Nebuchadnecharinnum raja, appidiyaga, andha erisulaim patratte pidiyathu, devaaliyathai, awan taraimattamaki, andha devaaliyathilindu, ellaa panimuttukale, aman Babylonukka.
From that day onwards.
Annal mudarkondi.
Daniel was praying that, "Lord, God have a temple in Jerusalem."
Annal mudarkondi, daniel jebithukondrindadu, devane, andha erisulaimile, oru aaleyam maravennam.
So, he was praying for a second temple.
Agave, irandavudur aalethirka, awan jebithukondrindha.
It is very interesting to note that God is not only giving about the second temple, all the temples, visions of the all temple to Daniel.
Edu miha swarasimaha dikrathu, andha rendavadu devaaliyathai kuri thumattum illai, inimel varapogare, ellaa devaaliyangelai kuri thadharisunathai, danielukka kaanavithaan.
We know that, I told you in chapter six, when Daniel prayed, the Cyrus given permission to build the second temple.
Naan erekknavesunena, aramadigharathtilindu, daniel jebitha boda, andha devaaliyathi thiruma kattuvadarkana katliyai, koresu perappithaan.
Yeah, in between, the temple construction was stopped.
Adharukka naduville, devaaliyam kattumpani, adu ninradu.
Daniel was very much worried about it.
Daniel adhey kuri thadigamaha, kavaleppattaa.
He was fasting and praying for the second temple.
Andha rendavadu aalethirka, ubavasi thudjabammaninaa.
Anyhow, after a few years.
Eppidiyo, adutha orusilaandukkalukka pin.
The second temple was constructed.
Irandavadu devaaliyam kattappattadu.
Who constructed it?
Adu yaar kattinadu?
Book of Esra says very clearly.
Esraavin pusugamika theliwaga sollukrathu.
Zerubabel and Joshua, they joined together and constructed the second temple.
Zerubabelum, Yosuaavum, untrusairundu, devaaliyathai kattimudithargal.
This temple was there when the Lord Jesus Christ came in the world.
Indha aaleyam aanadu, anavraa hesukrisuva, unugathile vandabodhi, idhirundadu.
Please listen carefully.
Gavnamaha kaelingal.
And lot of problems were there for this temple during these four hundred dark years.
Indha naanur irundakala kattathin boda, indha devaaliyathirukka, eralamana prachinagil vendadu.
During that four hundred years.
Andha naanur andukkunaduville.
We know there was a Grecian king came.
Angai oru grek, oru arasun vandhan.
And that man's name is Andiocepipanas.
Andiocepipanas indra sollakkudee, thana rajaavin payar.
We read about his prophecy in the book of Daniel, chapter eight.
Andha, andha, deerkadharisunathai kuri thudaniel ettamadigharathle parkrum.
He was like Antichrist.
Awan Andikrisuvaipola.
He killed many Jewish people.
Anegay yudharagal, aman polais seyyada.
And this Andiocepipanas.
Indha Andiocepipanas indra sollakkudee.
He polluted the temple, second temple.
Awan indha rendavadu devaaliyathai, awan nasammaninana.
He stopped the sacrifices in the second temple.
Andha rendavadu devaaliyathile, balihaleyavanniruthinana.
And he erected the image of the Grecian god inside the temple.
Andha grek devathinudaya, andha silayi, andha devaaliyathirukka, naduville, aman stabithaan.
On the altar of God, he offered the pig as a sacrifice.
Andha devaaliyathinudaya, andha, andha balibidathin meel, andha pandigalunudaya, irachche baliittaan.
So, we see the second temple has gone through a lot of pollution and all the difficulties.
Eppidiyaga, rendavadu kattappattad devaaliyam aanadu, eralamana kasrathin kaalathin velliaga, adu asutathin velliaga, kadunduvandadu.
I don't know whether you know, there was a man called Judas Maccabees at that time.
Andha kaalathin boda, yudas maccabi indra sollakkudee, oru unirunana.
And he fought with this Andiocepipanas.
Andha Andiocepipanas oodukooda, edhrutthi, aman pooy.
And he captured the temple.
Appaladu aalethi, aman piddithaan.
The second temple.
Rendavadu aaleyam.
And dedicated, purified the temple.
Appaladu, awan idhay pradhistri seyyadu, awan parishuthappadithina.
So, the second temple was there for a long time.
Andha rendavadu aaleyam aanadu, innum neendaaandukal irundadu.
During the first century, when the Jesus was born.
Yesu perandha, andha mudal utranthin boda.
The king who was ruling, he was a hero, was ruling.
Andha appaladu arasatchi seyyada raja, erodu raja.
Herod, he wanted the favor of the Jewish people.
Indha erodu raja, yudha janangaludaya, andha dayaveyavannadi na.
So, because he wanted to get the favor of the Jewish people, he renovated the temple of God.
Andha yudha janangaludaya, dayaveyavannadi nabadinaali, andha devaaliyathi, aman alahe buduthinana.
More than forty years it took to renovate and rededicate that temple.
Andha devaaliyathi, pudupithu, adharukka, adhey paramaripadarka, narputaandukal eduthukonna.
So, listen carefully.
Agave, gavnamaha kaelingal.
The second temple is also called as Herod's Temple.
Indha rendavadu aaleyam aanadu, eroduvin aaleyam indra malakkappadukkada.
These two, this, this is the same temple where Jesus used to go there.
Idhaan, idhay aalethirukka, thana anavraa hesukrisuva, povadi valakkamaha vayikrutha.
And God is giving the vision of the second temple to Daniel.
Indha rendavadu devaaliyathinudaya darisunathayum, danielukka karttharkoduthaan.
And is telling that this second temple is going to be constructed.
Awar sollukrara, indha derendavadu devaaliyam kattappadum.
Not only the second temple will be constructed.
Rendavadu devaaliyam kattappaduvadu matramalla.
That is going to be destroyed.
Adu alikappadavum seyyum.
And who will destroy?
Adu yaar alikappogradu?
Everything is mentioned here.
Ellam inge sollapadrakrada.
Just to read, Daniel, chapter nine, verse twenty-six.
Daadeenigal vasingal, daniel unbadhamadigharantin, nirvatharaadu vasunam.
The people of the prince that shall come shall destroy the city and the sanctuary.
Varapogra, brabuvin janangal, vandhena, nagaraththayum, parishuthasthalaththayum, awarlaalithupoduargal.
Very clearly, God has given vision to Daniel.
Miha theliwaga, danielukka, kartthadharisunam alithaan.
The city and the sanctuary is going to be destroyed.
Nagaramum, parishuthasthalamum, adu alikappadum.
This is not about the first temple, this is about the second temple.
Edu mudal devaaliyathi kuri thalla, irandam devaaliyathi kuri thalla.
Jesus Christ also predicted about this second temple.
Indha rendavadu devaaliyathi kuri th, hesukrisuva, guda, awar solliirindra.
Matthew, chapter twenty-four, we read about that prediction.
Andha, awar solna kariyathai, matthayu, iruvathin angaadigharathle, nam parkrum.
What is predicted in Daniel, same thing Lord also predicted.
Danielile, ganikappattadhe kariyam, namadhyanavaram, adhey ganithusunnahar.
Now, come to the Matthew, chapter twenty-four, we read that.
Eppaladu, matthayu, iruvathin angaadigharathukvarum boda, adhey vasikkrom.
Now, look at that, Matthew twenty-four.
Paringal, matthayu, iruvathin angaadigharam.
Jesus Christ, along with the disciples, left the temple of God.
Hesukrisuva, amarudanayirindu, seserugalum, devaaliyathi vittuponargal.
He entered in the temple triumphantly, but they rejected, so he came out of the temple of God.
Oru jayduniyoodukooda, devaaliyathirukku, ulle, pravesithaar, ananal, awargalo, niraharithaar, awar adhilindu velliavanna.
The disciples came and sat along with him, verse twenty, chapter twenty-four, verse one and two.
Iruvathin angaadigharam, mudal rendu vasunam, eppaladu, seserugal, awaroodukooda, vandhamartharagal. Yesu devaaliyathi vittapurappattapogayil, awaruday seserugal, devaaliyathin kattidangale, awarukka kaanvikka, awar edathil vandharagal. Yesu, awargalai noke, ivaygalay ellam parkririgalay, ivudathil, orukkalin meel, orukkal irada badikki, ellam idikappattapohum indra, meyyaavave, ungalukku sollugreindra.
The disciples came and told, "Lord, look at Lord, what a beautiful temple it is."
Seserugal, vandhanavudathresunnahar, lhanduverai parum, ellalu alaahaerukkada.
Yes, this, Lord agreed that this temple is very beautiful.
Aam, nichimaha, indha, indha aaleyam alahaerthaa.
But this temple is going to be destroyed.
Ananal, indha aaleyam, adu idikappadum.
How it is going to be destroyed?
Adu eppidi alikappadum.
Look at that, Lord says that it will be destroyed in such a manner that one stone will not remain upon the other stone.
Edu endenelameela, adu alikappadum indra, livudathle, orukkalin meel, orukkal irada badikki, adu idikappattapohum.
When the disciple heard it.
Appaladu, seserugal, adhey kettabodhi.
They were very much upset.
Awarukka miha um kavaleyahaerindadu.
Lord, what you are talking?
Anavraa, ni rennapesukri.
This temple is going to be destroyed.
Indha aaleyam, adu idikappadum.
They couldn't believe it.
Awargal, nambambidiyavillai.
They asked, "Lord, when it is going to happen?"
Awargal, kettar, lhanduverai, adhey eppaladu naddakum.
Lord has very clearly mentioned to them.
Anavramiha theliwaha, awarukusunnahar.
This temple is going to be destroyed.
Indha aaleyam, adu idikappadum.
What is the Daniel prophecy says?
Danieludaya deerkadharisunam, indra sollukrathu.
The first one.
Mudal, mudal kariyam.
The Messiah shall be cut off.
Mesia sangarikkappaduwar.
After one week, they killed the Messiah.
Oru varathir kaparamaha, mesiaavi kolaisi daragal.
And exactly after forty years.
Angai sariyaha, narputaandukalil.
The Lord has very clearly predicted that this temple will be destroyed.
Anavramiha theliwaha, awar ganithirindha, thulliamaaga, indha aaleyam idikappadum.
As the Lord has predicted exactly in AD seventy.
Anavramiha sonnadu poldave, keepi eluvadil.
The temple, second temple also destroyed.
Rendam aaleymum, adu idikappattadu.
The Roman army surrounded the city of Jerusalem.
Erisulaim patnatthai, Roma porchavargal, suttiwalaitaaragal.
And Titus was the general, army general at that time.
Andha kaalathin boda, andha porchavega, adhipadiyaga, andha Titus in boda.
There was a revolt of Jewish people at that time.
Andha nerathle, andha yudharagal, angai, awarukka kederaha porittaaragal.
So, suppressed the Jewish revolt.
Andha yudharudaya porathathai odukkuvaadarka.
They attacked the city of Jerusalem.
Andha erisulaim patnatthai, awarlaal thakinaragal.
Not only that, they killed all the Jewish people.
Awargal, ellaa yudharagalayum, kondadu matramalla.
That Joseph, as the historian says.
Angai, andha, sarithra elutthalar, josephas, awar sollukbodhi.
They crucified in every tree, they crucified the Jewish people.
Oovor marathileyum, yudha janangalay, awargal thukkilittaaragal.
And they killed all the Jewish people in Jerusalem.
Erisulaimile, vandha ellaa yudharagalayum, kolaisi daragal.
And in their anger, one of the soldiers, he threw a fireball upon the temple.
Adhale, oru porchavegan, andha devaaliyathin meel, oru teepandaththai visirinana.
Titus already told that you can do anything, but don't destroy the temple.
Andha teethu endha, andha arasan, erekknavesollirindha, ningal eduvenndu, analam seyidukolungal, ananal, devaaliyathirukondrum, pangamalakkavennam.
But in their anger, they threw fire upon the temple.
Ananal, awargal, tanguday kovathinale, andha devaaliyathi meel, oru teepandaththai thukkirinana.
Then their temple was burned.
Appaladu, devaaliyam erikappattadu.
And we see that the second temple also destroyed.
Appaladu, parkum boda, andha rendam devaaliyam, malinduponnadu.
It is not an accidental thing.
Adu tharchailaha, naddanavibathu alla.
The day and the month on which the first temple was destroyed.
Mudal devaaliyam idikappattad, adhey maadam, adhey tediilay.
And the same day and the same month, the second temple also destroyed.
Adhey maadam, adhey tediilay, rendam devaaliyamum idikappattadu.
The Daniel prophecy is fulfilled.
Danieludaya deerkadharisunam, niravairindadu.
Look at that, the people of the prince that shall come shall destroy the city and the sanctuary.
Inge paringal, nagaraththayum, parishuthasthalaththayum, varapogra, brabuvin janangal, alithupoduargal.
The people will destroy.
Janangal alithupoduargal.
Who are the people who destroy?
Adhey alithupotta janangal yaar?
The Roman people destroy.
Roma, Roma janangal.
It is not the prince who destroyed.
Prabu alikavillai.
You say, you look at that very carefully.
Ningaladhi, maruday gavnamaha paringal.
Look at that, it is not the prince who is destroyed.
Adhey alithathu prabu alla.
It is the people of the prince who is going to come.
Adhey varapogra, andha brabuvin janangal, vandhalithupoduargal.
Who is this prince, you tell me now?
Indha prabu yaar, indra eppaladu sollungal.
This is Antichrist.
Edu Andikristu.
From where the Antichrist will come?
Engirindandikristu varuwan?
Of course, not from India, isn't it?
Aam, India nichimaha kadayalillai.
From where the Antichrist will come?
Daniel, engirindandikristu varuwan?
This is a very clear verse suggests that, from where the Antichrist will come.
Edu miha theliwaha, namakuparindurakrathu, Andikristu engirindavavannan.
Who are the people who destroyed the temple?
Andha devaaliyathai idiththadu yaar?
Romans.
Janangal, romergal.
That means Antichrist will come from?
Andharatham, Andikristu engirindavavannan.
He is a Roman by origin.
Awan thanudya perappinale, oru romanaherupaan.
I don't know whether he is, which country he is going to come.
Awan endhadeshathilindu varapograanidu, ennak teriyadu.
Brother says, "He's a pope, he's not pope, don't worry about it."
Savathuna pope indra, pope nichimaha.
He has to be a political leader.
Awan oru arasyal talivanaha, thana irukkavennam.
And he will come from, as a race, from the race, Roman race, he will come.
Awan endha inaththilindu varuwan indra, oru Roma pinnaniilindu, awan varuwan.
So, the Antichrist is a Roman by race.
Agave, Andikristu, thanudya inathile, aman Romanindra, arayappattavan ahaerthaa.
So, this verse says, "The people of the prince that shall come shall destroy that sanctuary."
Indha vasunam sollukrathu, varapogra, brabuvin janangal, vandhena, andha parishuthasthalaththai alithupoduargal.
As I told you, the Titus and the army, they destroyed the temple.
Naan sonnadu poldave, teethuvaum, amanudaya, andha porchavega, andha seynayum, vandhena, devaaliyathi edithupottadu.
And when the fire was extinguished and everything is completed.
Andha, eyrinthatthi, ellam, anekkappattu, mudindapirpada.
You know, the ender temple is full of gold, it was.
Ulkuthariyam, mulu aaleymum, adu, adu, poninalaanadu.
It melted, the gold melted and ended in the cavities of the stones.
Andha, andha, thangam aanadu, thiile, urhi, andha kalugalukkidaile, poithanginadu.
The soldiers decided that we will take the stone one by one and take the gold from that cavities.
Andha porchavargal, ninathaaragal, andha kalugalukkidaile, irukkakoodiya thangaththi eduthuvadavennam indra, orukkalayam payaridutha.
So, the temple, they destroyed in such a manner that one stone could not remain upon the other.
Agave, endenelameela, edithupottharindha, andha aalethilindu, orukkal, machthum orukkalin meel, irada badikke.
Somebody said that underneath, in the foot, in the, in the foundation also, when Solomon made, he has scattered a lot of gold coins.
Selleri vidamaha sunnahargal, awargal astibaram, pottabodhi, salamon kooda, eralamana thangakkasigal, astibaratthile, aman potradhna.
These soldiers decided even to take that fountain, each fountain was stone, so it's a remote, to take the gold.
Indha porchavargal, ninathaaragal, indha, eppidiyaga, kalugalukkula, sikikkondrakrathu, ellaa thangaththi, meduthuvadavennam.
As Lord has predicted.
Devan ganithathu poldave.
The second temple was completely destroyed.
Irandavadu aaleyam, muttilimaaha, alikappattadu.
In such a manner that there was no stone upon stone.
Orukkalin meel, orukkal irada badikke.
These prophecies are word to word fulfilled.
Indha deerkadharisunangal, ellam, varthekvarthai, niravairukrathu.
As I told you, three things happened after the sixty-nine weeks.
Naan erekknavesunnadu polda, aruvathunbadu varangalukka, pin, munder kariyam naddakrathu.
Number one.
Mudal kariyam.
The Messiah was cut off.
Mesia sangarikkappaduwar.
Secondly.
Irandavadu.
The city and the sanctuary was destroyed.
Andha nagaramum, parishuthasthalamum, adu alikappadum.
The third thing.
Mundraavudukkariyam.
In AD seventy.
AD, keepi eluvadil.
After some time.
Orusila kaalathirakram.
Every Jewish people in the city of Jerusalem was scattered.
Erisulaimil, kudirindu, ellaa yudha janangalum, sidharadikappattadu.
They were scattered all over the world.
Awargal, ulagamengam sidharadikappattadu.
That was the beginning of the sorrow of the nation of history.
Adu daan, nisravell, janangaludaya, dukkathinudaya, tuvakka kaalam.
When they crucified the Messiah.
Awargal, mesiaavi siluvaila ariththabodhi.
What they said?
Awar ennasunnahargal.
Let his blood come upon us and our?
Ivunudhey ratthappali, engalmeelum, engal pilligalmeelum, marathum.
Literally, it happened.
Adu appidiyaduthinbadiniravairindadu.
And the blood of Lord Jesus Christ came upon them and their children.
Anavraa hesukrisuva, udya rattham aanadu, awargalmeelum, awarudil pilligalmeelum, vandhuvilindadu.
Throughout the human history.
Yes, throughout the human history.
For the last two thousand years.
Yes, for the last two thousand years.
The Jewish people are suffering because they rejected the Messiah.
Yes, the Jewish people are suffering because they rejected the Messiah.
See, the prophecy of Daniel was literally word to word, it was fulfilled.
Yes, see, the prophecy of Daniel was literally word to word, it was fulfilled.
All the three things happened exactly.
Yes, all the three things happened exactly.
And the next one, one more week is there.
Yes, and the next one, one more week is there.
Seventieth week.
Seventieth week.
Tomorrow, we will see that.
Yes, tomorrow, we will see that.
In the seventieth week.
Yes, in the seventieth week.
God is giving a revelation of the third temple to Daniel.
Yes, God is giving a revelation of the third temple to Daniel.
So, God has given all the visions of all the temple to Daniel.
Yes, so, God has given all the visions of all the temple to Daniel.
Second temple will be destroyed.
Yes, the second temple will be destroyed.
Again, God is telling to Daniel, there will be a third temple.
Yes, again, God is telling to Daniel, there will be a third temple.
And even the third temple will be polluted by Antichrist.
Yes, and even the third temple will be polluted by Antichrist.
If God willing, we will consider more detail about that, the third temple and the last one week tomorrow.
Yes, and the last one week tomorrow.
If you have any doubt on this subject, you have liberty to come and ask me, I will explain to you.
Yes, if you have any doubt on this subject, you have liberty to come and ask me, I will explain to you.
Yes, if you have any doubt on this subject, you have liberty to come and ask me, I will explain to you. Surely, I am sure that this study will be profitable for you to understand how perfectly word to word the Bible prophecies are getting fulfilled.
Yes, surely, I am sure that this study will be profitable for you to understand how perfectly word to word the Bible prophecies are getting fulfilled.
Yes, surely, I am sure that this study will be profitable for you
to understand how perfectly word to word the Bible prophecies are getting fulfilled.
We are living in a time where the everything is ready for the third temple.
Yes, we are living in a time where the everything is ready for the third temple.
That shows that the coming of the Lord is very, very near.
Yes, that shows that the coming of the Lord is very, very near.
If God willing, we will come tomorrow and worship and remember about the Lord's coming.
Yes, if God willing, we will come tomorrow and worship and remember about the Lord's coming.
We thank and praise God for our wonderful word of God that we have.
Yes, we thank and praise God for our wonderful word of God that we have.
Only Bible is the book which is filled with prophecy.
Yes, only Bible is the book which is filled with prophecy.
And there is no other book in this world which has prophecy, and Bible is very unique in that.
Yes, and there is no other book in this world which has prophecy, and Bible is very unique in that.
Because if there is prophecy in that book, it has to be fulfilled. If it is not fulfilled, the book will fall off.
Yes, if it is not fulfilled, the book will fall off.
So, Bible is filled with prophecy.
Yes, so, Bible is filled with prophecy.
And whenever you consider a subject like this.
Yes, and whenever you consider a subject like this.
The exciting things will come at the end.
Yes, the exciting things will come at the end.
So, tomorrow is a very exciting day.
Yes, tomorrow is a very exciting day.
So, we are going to come and worship the Lord.
Yes, we are going to come and worship the Lord.
And we will be continuing the study also.
Yes, and we will be continuing the study also.
So, may God help us in each and every one of us, that we will worship Him in spirit and truth tomorrow.
Yes, so, may God help us in each and every one of us, that we will worship Him in spirit and truth tomorrow.
And we have a lot of reasons, even as we are studying, to worship Him more and more.
Yes, and we have a lot of reasons, even as we are studying, to worship Him more and more.
So, tomorrow, we gather at nine o'clock for worship.
Yes, so, tomorrow, we gather at nine o'clock for worship.
And then evening, we gather at four o'clock.
And then evening, we gather at four o'clock.
Now, I request brother Hari to come and close this meeting in prayer.
Yes, brother Hari to come and close this meeting in prayer.
After that, we have a small dinner for everyone, so I request you to partake in that also.
Yes, after that, we have a small dinner for everyone, so I request you to partake in that also. Yes, after that, we have a small dinner for everyone, so I request you to partake in that also.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much. 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 Good morning, everyone. 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 Good morning, everyone.[1696.94]